Call to meeting, call to meeting of the committee of the whole this Monday, January 7th, 6:00 PM. Clerk will read the roll.
All right, Councilor Capone.
Yeah.
I have Councilor Dosso.
Yeah.
I have Councilor DePerey.
Here.
I have Councilor DePiro.
Here.
I have Councilor Allen.
Here.
I have Councilor Mike Hayes.
Here.
I have Councilor Matuski. I have Councilor McGlaughlin. I have Councilor McKinnon.
Yeah.
I have Councilor Dipolitano.
Here.
And I have Councilors McLeary.
Here.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine members present.
Okay, we have, you have a quorum. We'll rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will read the one item on the agenda.
This is a resolution by Councilor Capone and McGlaughlin. They are representatives of Encore Boston Harbor, Everseus, in the city of Everett, to discuss the construction on Lower Broadway. Its impact in the neighborhood, both residential and commercial, and the expected duration and possibility of alter of the work schedule to provide relief to those negatively impacted.
Councilor Capone.
I believe the members from Encore Boston Harbor are here and they have a presentation, so I'll hold, I'll reserve any questions till after that.
Councilor McKinnon.
I'll reserve till after.
Just wait on a motion. We have a motion for the representatives from Everseus to come before us. Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Do we have anyone here from Everseus?
Encore.
Encore, okay. All right, so let's amend that motion to include the Encore representatives. Oh, is it second? Okay, all in favor to have the Encore representatives come before us? Say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. If you please join us. Okay, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Good, great. Good evening, councilors. My name is Robert DeSalvio, President of Encore Boston Harbor, and tonight I'm joined by Mr. John Taco, who's here, and also Mr. Al Carrier, who's sitting out in the audience tonight. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to the council president for your year of service, to the, to the community, and also to the rest of the council, thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight to give you an update on the project, and in particular, some discussion about the roads. So I just want to start by doing a general project update before we get into discussion about the roads. This particular slide shows you the, shows you the Encore at the top of the building. Recently, we completed the work on the sign. We are currently still working on the marquee out in the front of the building, but just the fact that, it's been quite interesting because just turning on that sign on the top of the building has actually caused an increase in the amount of job applications we're getting, because people are starting to actually kind of get that the building is here, and it's coming, and it's gonna, it's gonna open soon. This is another shot, looking from the north, heading south down towards the city of Boston. This is actually a good shot, looking to the west. It shows the new dock being put in front of the property, as well as the continuation of some of the outdoor landscaping work that's being done out through the peninsula, and you can see the completion of the harbor walk around the project. In this particular case, you're looking at the convention space that's at the far end of the peninsula of the building, and they've done quite a bit of work to the outside of the space. Here's a shot looking north, and you can see the new dockway system put in, as well as the, the gang, the gang, the gang walk that'll take you down from the front of the building to the dock space, the new bulkhead area, as well as some of the landscaping in the, on the outside. You can also see the port of cashier in the front of the building, and the new skylight area just inside the lobby. Here's a west-facing shot from, if you were on Broadway, looking towards the west, you can see the side of the tower, and what is currently being constructed is the east lobby, which will provide an area for shuttle buses and any other connector bus that we have that'll arrive on that eastern part of the building. Here's a shot again facing west, shows you how, you know, literally how close we are to Assembly Row, and later on, we'll talk a little bit about how we could possibly connect there. And then here's a north-facing shot that gives you a really good frontal shot of what the building looks like, especially you can see this from anyone passing on 93, but it really is starting to take shape out by the water, and you can see the, the little pavilion right on the corner of the property, and the living shoreline that started to grow in. I'm not going to take you through all this, but this is our project schedule, and what it, what it basically shows is that we're on track for a June opening of this year. You know, right now, our current projected date is June 23rd, open to the public. We will get possession of the building a few weeks before that, so we can get our staff in there to do training, but right now, all systems are go for a June opening, and that's just a continuation of the schedule. Let's talk, let's get right into the off-site road improvements, because I know this has been one of the primary topics. I will tell you that we got, well, first I want to say, we are absolutely sorry for any inconvenience that was caused over the summer. This particular summer was, I'm going to say, the worst period of time for the construction because we were doing the large stretch of Broadway, so we know that caused some issue. We know that council heard about that. We know the mayor's office heard about that, and, and we did as well. Unfortunately, when you're going to do any sort of significant road work, it's hard to avoid it. You can't shut down the roads, but at the end of the day, we moved as quickly as possible, and I'll tell you, we made really good progress this fall, because up, up through today, we've had actually a very good stretch of weather. Al was able to keep the asphalt plants open longer than we thought. We got to pave all of Broadway, both sides, which was unexpected. We thought we might have to come back and do that in the spring, and then we got a chance to at least put the binder course down on most of Robin and Dexter, and get that, and that particular road is a full-depth repaving, so that's a major redo, because that road was in horrible shape. So we got a, we got more of that work done than we thought we would've this fall, so we'll be able to come back in the spring, and Al, probably what, six, seven weeks worth of work or so out there, where we can finish the, the final paving on Robin and Dexter, get back into Broadway and do the, you know, we created those new islands on Broadway, but they needed, they need to be landscaped and then all cleaned up, so we've got, we do have some cleanup work to do, but it's actually going well. This particular slide shows you all of the different areas where we're working, which is Wellington, Sullivan Square, Santilli, Sweets, and of course, on lower Broadway. I think this shot is really quite amazing, so this is an elevated shot, looking north up Broadway, and you can just see the area alone, right out in front of where the resort is, and how wide the new Broadway is, and what, for the first time, is created, now we have turning lanes. And for, I'm sure all of you know, the reason you get those, a lot of the backups on Broadway is when somebody is turning, there wasn't the room to get them out of a lane, and so now you can see the width of that road has gotten much larger there. The new sidewalks are being put in. You can see the marquee in the front of the building, and the forest we planted out front, basically. I think we're up to almost 500, I think 500 trees have been planted in that particular area, so it's starting to look really good. Here's a tighter shot that you can see now, and, and it shows you the, the nice islands that are going to be in the middle, the, the walkways across the road. There'll be a new bus stop out in the front, and what I found really attractive is the new lighting up and down. Those beautiful new light poles have now gone in all the way up and down Broadway to give it a nice, even look. That's a shot looking west of the new archway out in the front of the building. One of them has been constructed, the inbound, the outbound has not been constructed yet. We'll be doing that shortly, and again, you'll see a number of the, the tree plantings and the berm that was created out front. And then on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see where the, the sidewalk jogs, that's where the new bus drop-off will be for the MBTA buses, that will land right out in front of the property. There's a shot looking north on Broadway, and again, you can see the new lighting, and you can see the, the width of the new roads and all the new sidewalks. This is a shot, I want to show you some of the areas even outside of Everett, because I think all of this traffic winds up having an impact one way or another. This is a shot over by Sullivan Square. We just completed the, most of the work over in Sullivan Square, near where the train station is and where the buses drop off. We created a whole new traffic pattern. We've repaved, we're putting in new signals, so there's really quite a bit of work being done. This is a shot that we took from up on top of the Schraft Center, looking down on Sullivan Square, and you can see all the work that's being done in the rotary. We finally, and you know, what's really nice to see is all the new sidewalks. That was probably the biggest weakness in Sullivan Square, was if you were trying to get to the, get over to the orange line, or to get a bus, there were, there were not good areas for folks to cross. There was no ADA access, there was no sidewalks, and so now, all of that has been done, and the last step of this, Al, will be we'll go back in the spring and do quite a bit of landscaping work, clean up that whole sort of center part of the circle, and, and then complete that project for the spring. Here's a shot over at Santilli. I think we've made, Al, probably the most progress in Santilli. It's almost done. It's really complete, but look at the, you can just see, again, the sidewalks are redone, ADA crossings are done, the lines are striped, the lanes now form at least, and you can get some semblance of order out there, and I think it's really made a nice improvement in Wellington. This is a schedule that just shows the, the Broadway work and the truck route. Again, Al, if you had to predict the Robin and Dexter completion, what would you say about May?
Mid to late May.
Mid to late May, we should be completely done with Robin and Dexter. These, again, just show you the different schedules. I wanted to talk a little bit about local construction jobs. You know, it's an area that John has been tracking in particular. 198 Everett workers out on the job site so far, with over 213,000 hours' worth of work, which translates into about $13 million, and then total locally, which is all of our hosts and neighboring and surrounding communities, that's been about 1,500 workers so far, and about a million, 1.3 million hours. And then again, we always, we put in the Everett population just to show you that, even though it's only 0.6% of the population, we're way overrepresented by having 4% of the overall workforce. And again, that's just the construction workforce. I can tell you, in our office, we have, I think now, 40, 40 Everett residents are now in, in our permanent operations team as well. So again, we're trying to make sure that we stay true to the commitments that we made to the community as part of the project. We also wanted to make sure that we use this project as a way to spread the money throughout the community, so we've been tracking for the gaming commission how much we've been spending with minority women and veteran businesses, and you can see so far, in the design phases alone, we're up to about $15 million worth of work, 31 different contracts. We had a goal of 18.9% of the work. We actually exceeded that goal and have committed 23.6% of the work. As far as construction contracts, this is the actual work being done on the site, so far, over $237 million worth of contracts have been given to minority women and veteran businesses, and it represents over 240 contracts. We had a goal of 11.4% of the work, and we've come in at 18% of the work in total. And then for the actual construction workforce, we've had, we had a goal of 15% for minorities, we're right now hovering about 25%. We had a very aggressive goal of 6.9% of female work hours, we're up to 7.1%, and the average job nationwide is about 2% to 3% women, so we're really, we are really moving ahead and trying to set an example of getting women into the construction trades. And then on the veteran front, we had a goal of 3%, we've come in at about 5.8% of the workforce out on the job site. I want to turn this over now to John, wants to talk about some of the community investments.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for having me here. I apologize for looking at my phone, but Jenny Peterson, our Director of Recruitment, sent me a note, asked me to remind everybody that this Thursday, January 10th, we'll, we'll be holding a job fair for a security hiring fair at Anthony's in Malden. Priority access will be given to residents of Everett and Malden from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM. You must apply online in advance. Security guard pay is $19 an hour. Our website's EncoreBostonJobs.com. For anyone that may be watching and listening, please go to EncoreBostonJobs.com for more information. Also coming up is, I'm sorry, councillor? Did you have, okay. It's this Thursday, January 10th. 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM is the priority access for Everett, and then it will be ongoing after that. Also, on Monday, January 28th, we'll be holding a cage cashier's panel interview. That's also a live hiring event. That will be held at the Conley Center from 1:30 to 3:30 PM. You must have applied online in advance for that as well. That is on, again, Monday, January 28th, at the Conley Center. Just for your future notice, and there, there'll be a lot of this information coming out. We'll be launching a HR campaign later this month. That will be a very aggressive campaign. At one point, you're going to be asking all of us to turn it down a little bit, because it's going to be popping up in your social media feeds and channels, you'll see it in the newspapers, but we'll get this information out, don't worry, but just so you have it in advance, and anybody watching, we're going to be holding a large hiring event, oh wait, before that, we're going to be holding on February 16th, Saturday, February 16th, a cage cashier's panel interview, again, being held at the Conley Center from 12 to 4:00 PM. Priority access for Everett residents from 12 to 1:00 PM. Sunday, February 24th, this is going to be our large hiring event, so we'll be holding at least three of these events, and one in February, one in March, and one in April. There'll be more information coming, but this is where we hope to hire the bulk of the 5,000 people. Those are going to be held right now at the Heinz Convention Center, so the first one is Sunday, February 24th, and Monday, February 25th. This is a mass hiring event. There'll be interviews ongoing at the site, there may be drug testing available onsite to be able to get through the whole process. We'll be interviewing and hiring on the spot. Heinz Convention Center and priority access for Everett residents and surrounding community residents as well. With that being said, let's go to our highlights on the community. We're proud of some things that, that happened to us this year. The Disabled American Veterans of Massachusetts awarded us as the 2017, 2018 Large Employer of the Year. It was a great honor to be out there, receiving that award from them, and we also, with the city of Everett, and in the Mystic River Watershed Association dominated us, and we won the 2018 Environmental Merit Award from the United States Environmental Protection Agency. We're also extremely fortunate. I know that, that the city's very eagerly putting together with different representatives of the community, the Community Foundation, that should be coming out, you know, before we open with more details, but in addition to that, we're so pleased that our, our CEO, Matt Maddox, and Bob DeSalvio, our president, has approved a four-year commitment to spend $10 million in the surrounding communities, or in, in this, this whole region. So we're really excited, we've been working diligently on that. That's in addition to the roughly $1 million that will be spent in our host and surrounding communities for local nonprofits, as an example, is the 250,000 annually that will be given out to local nonprofits through the Community Foundation that will be set up. So really excited about that. We donated $100,000 to support the Greater Lawrence Disaster Relief efforts. Unfortunately, that is a need that continues. We didn't know how long that that would last, but it does seem that, that there's still folks that need it, it's still a problem out there, and so we're happy to participate. Our employees, and, and we're still relatively small compared to the 5,000, we're at about 300 people now, 350 people, I believe, we've put in over 4,000 employee volunteer hours for the year. We expect that to grow, we're really excited about it. Our team has really bought into, to volunteerism, they're really excited about it, it's become a really big team-building activity for us. And we will be awarding, and we have awarded a number of these, but we will be awarding 75 scholarships to the Cambridge College Bet on You. This is our dealer program, and we've graduated over 100 dealers, we have about 150 dealers so far. I know in feedback from our VP of Table Games and the other trainers that are over there, and the pit bosses, they are extremely pleased with the folks that signed up for the school, that have gone through the training, that are participating. They, in, in, they were so pleased that they actually had increased the number of slots that were, were trying to squeeze as many people in, and so we've hired some more trainers, and we think we can, we found a way to even get some more folks through the system. So it's really exciting stuff. Just briefly, some quick highlights, we're out there on the Mystic River, picking up some water chestnuts. This is really in front of the Everett, Somerville, and Medford location where our office is. We ran in the, the DAV 5K, we're a sponsor, we had over 60 employees and family members participate in this year's run. We partnered up with the United Way to pack over 7,000 meals for folks in the surrounding areas, including the city of Everett, over the Thanksgiving holiday, and we partnered with the American Red Cross, too. We assembled 500 comfort kits onsite, and we went to the Bedford VA Hospital to distribute them, and other comfort kits were sent to the other VA hospitals to be given out to folks there. These are just to make their stays there a little bit more comfortable, convenient. It wasn't really a holiday activity, it was more of a, you know, these are hospitals, people are, people are in there, and, you know, trying to make their stay a little bit more pleasant. We did do a holiday event at the Everett, the Everett Grace Food Pantry. We, together with the food pantry, gave out over 12,000 pounds of fresh food. Our team spent the week decorating the event, putting together decorations and everything. It was a really exciting event for us. I know we saw many of you there. It was a wonderful activity, and it's, it's an organization we're going to continue to be volunteering with. But perhaps the most significant thing that we're able to do, we, we put over 500 volunteer hours just in this, and this is from some of our most senior folks in different parts of our organization, utilizing their expertise. You're probably familiar with the New England Center for Arts and Technology, they opened up a facility in Everett High School, which has since moved to the Parlin School, I believe, to train local residents on culinary skills, and impart these residents with culinary schools and prepare them for life in the workforce. These are folks that may have been unemployed for a number, a number of years, may have had some difficulty getting and retaining jobs, so it's a pleasure, they go through these programs, they parted with us, they've been very successful out of their program in Roxbury. One of the early things that we did when we approached them was say, you know, Rock, what you're doing here is amazing, what we'd love to do is see if we could do this more in our area, be so, so it's more convenient for residents of Everett and the surrounding area to participate in the great work you do. So the, the mayor's office, city council, the Everett schools, everyone's been extremely gracious with space and time given to the kneecap. We held a fundraising event, and we were able to raise over $372,000 to support that program in the coming years. It was a really spectacular event, we were so proud to do that, and then again, that's going right back to support the program here in Everett.
With that, is, there's any questions? We have to, Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you very much for, for being here this evening, and for providing that overview, and we do appreciate all the good that you are doing in the community, so thank you for that. The concern that we have on the agenda this evening is about the construction, and I know that you don't create that kind of facility without some growing pains along the way, and we understand that. One of the things in particular that was a concern is, it was kind of, it seems that there was a last-minute decision to take advantage of good weather. Now, I'm sure you folks got approval to do it, I don't know if there's anybody for the administration here, but the concern we had was, at least what I was told, is that there was a meeting on Monday, and then work was going to happen at some point down the road, and then on Thursday, or I think there was, okay, it's going to be the next day. Obviously, that impacts residents, businesses, et cetera, and I think what, what compounded that is that there, there was no communication to the city council. Now, that may, may not be your issue, you're interacting with the city, you've been given the approval to act. It would have been nice, as the representatives in the area, to know what was happening, and I'll put the fault where that is, that's administration. They got to let the council know work's going to be happening. Now, I understand that, again, and I'll say this at the outset, too, part of, I think it was Dexter Street, has been a cluster because of work that's supposed to be done over time with Everseus, and it was a drag in their feet, so it was a huge project that had happened down there. They dragged their feet for, is years an understatement, or, I mean, it's a while?
I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's years, but they definitely experienced some delays out there, and let me, let me back up for maybe one second. First of all, you're, you're, we're not going to turn around here and pass the buck over to the administration. I mean, at the end of the day, we're doing the work out there, so we take responsibility for what we're doing. We could have done, we could have done and should have done a better job with communication. It was, yes, it was last minute, and yes, we did try to take advantage of getting some work done because of the decent weather, but, you know, in looking back on it, Al, I mean, we've all talked about it, we literally revved that thing up, and listen, a, a quick notice to the council would have been easy, and we should have done it, so I'm not going to make any excuses for it.
That's fine.
We apologize, and we really should have done that. You know, you look back on these things sometimes with 2020 hindsight.
Sure.
And we could have done a better job. we could have done a better job. Once we got rolling, we did, I think, I remember on day two and day three, we got out there and really started communicating. We worked well then with the Everett Police Department. We rerouted traffic where necessary. That first couple of days was a stumble. I agree with that.
And so moving on from there and going forward, you've got parking lot done, and I know that there are vehicles out in the street, and enforcement has been relaxed with the exception of public safety. You know, you park too close to a corner, parked in front of a hydrant, but there are vehicles parked on sidewalks and et cetera, and that's permissible. One, for now, one thing that's been brought to my attention from a property owner in the area is that there's a claim that people are parking in private property. So if we could just talk to folks and let them know that although the rules are a little more relaxed right now about sidewalk, street, et cetera, private property aspect of it, we've got to stay off of that.
That is, and that is off limits. And we tell our folks that, and quite honestly, you know, we can, we try not to, but we can tow. And so, I mean, if somebody is blocking somebody's driveway or whatever, that is not acceptable. And we would be willing, and again, if brought to our attention, normally, they're pretty good about contacting John or Al, but if brought to our attention and if they are truly blocking somebody's property or whatever, we would have no problem towing.
Okay, great. And I know that part of the parking lot has been completed, correct?
Correct.
And so now, the other part has to be done. If you could just give me an idea of a timetable in terms of duration to get the parking lot done. I know we've got Robin and Dexter, six or seven weeks' worth of work finishing up to mid to late May. When you're doing that project, are we talking seven days a week, five days a week, four days a week?
Let me, I'm going to turn to Al for a second. Number, when we get back into Robin and Dexter, how many days a week for work?
We'll probably start with the five days a week again. It will be weather-dependent, and, you know, some of what we're moving to, there's some of the things that we run into. We have a lot of lanes, so we'll probably start with the five days a week. If we need to extend the hours because of inclement weather or working the weekends, you know, we'll obviously coordinate with the city on that. We'll stay monitoring.
Okay. Great, great. And whatever notice we can get as far, as far ahead of time as possible, so the neighborhood knows what to plan for. And then...
I'm sorry, I'm assuming John, is there one email queue that actually hits all council members? Can we, do we have them in a group? Great, okay. So we'll add that, Al, we should do that as well, and just they have, if they have a single email that gets to all of them, I think, let's just use that as the queue. And your timing question, when we get back out and do Robin and Dexter, and you asked about the parking, all of that is scheduled to be done probably late May. All of that.
And if the weather breaks early, if possible, we'll take advantage of that. We have been using our Windfall website as a way to communicate with folks and with the police department, with the Department of Strongarm Group. They create a really nice text message group, and, you know, we saw some of the key businesses down there in Island End Group with Schipser and Citra Gas and some of the folks down there. So they now get these kind of text messages as well as Windfall updates. And we do a weekly notice as well. We send that out through email. We'll give advance notice on when the work, sorry, backed up, but if the weather breaks early, we want to take advantage of that.
Sure. All right, thank you. I appreciate that. And with regards to the remainder of the parking lot that needs to be done, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? What can we expect in the neighborhood in terms of vehicles, where they'll be able to park? When are we going to be able to get vehicles off the street, onto lot, that kind of stuff?
Sure. That lot, same, same timing, done late May. The good news is, as right now, our number of construction workers peaked a few months ago at about 1,500, 1,600 per day. So now, we're in the now 1,100, 1,200 per day, and as we get closer to completion, it actually starts to go down, which will take a little bit of pressure off as we work on that last section of the lot. The number of workers each day starts to actually decrease as we get closer to completion. So I think you'll start to see a little bit of relief out there in terms of pressure on the streets.
Well, thank you again.
I'm sorry, there is one more issue, though, that I want to throw out there. As part of that job, we do, we are going to do what's called a mill and overlay on Mystic Street, right, Al? It's Mystic, because Mystic is not in really good shape. So that, there will come a point in time where you're probably going to have to, we'll try to do that as quickly as possible, but we will have to do a full kind of mill and overlay in Mystic Street so that, and there'll be new sidewalks as well there, and again, just to make it easier for folks that are walking around. So I just wanted to alert the council on that.
No, thank you. And I appreciate that, and thank you for the information. And as the project goes forward, I know that it's coming to completion, and, you know, it's vast improvement on the roadways, et cetera. So we do appreciate that. But as the project continues, we just make sure that we keep everybody in the loop in terms of what to expect, especially the locals, or any residents or businesses that are in that area that are going to be impacted. Just so everybody knows to expect it, there's nothing worse than getting up one morning, getting in your car, and saying, what happened? So, and if someone calls, I want to be able to have an answer for it. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Michael Ophlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you two, our invited guests, thank you for appearing this evening. Thank you for doing this presentation. I had done this on two-fold with Councilor Capone. One was, we get these updates monthly or bimonthly, Councilor, President Apolitano, myself, and Councilor Capone, but it was good to have everybody in the loop and let everybody know what was going on. Secondly, is some of the comments that Councilor Capone had made, I just wanted to echo the concerns about the neighborhood, and just ask that as the spring comes about, if we can maybe have a monthly update. Can we do this, you know, every month so that all the councils are informed, so that it's not just a selective group that knows what's going on, but because everybody's getting phone calls, everybody is being asked questions daily. Now, as projects ramping up, work is happening very fast. As you said, you guys are moving at light and speed, just kind of keeping everybody in the loop. Sometimes the information isn't as forward coming as we'd like here, so we'd like to have you guys here.
Sure. We'd be happy to do it once a month. Well, John will arrange it, so we know when we're on your calendar. We'll do a sort of a general update on construction, roads, all of it, and we can do that. And usually, if you just give us 15, 20 minutes or something, we can knock that off once a month, and we'd be happy to do it.
Great. And again, just to try to keep the neighborhood in the loop, I mean, I was at an event, and I got questions, and I didn't have answers for some of those surrounding businesses down there, what had happened, and how it had come to be so quickly that all this construction kind of popped up overnight, and there was just no answers for anybody at that point. And thank you for all you're doing in the community. You guys are really in tune into the community. You've been great partners.
Thank you, Councilor.
And thank you for what you do.
Councilor Mackay-Zee.
Good evening. A couple of quick questions. First of all, I'll probably direct it to John. John, is there any chance you can list those jobs on local television? All those dates you had, and maybe put on our local television?
Sure, absolutely. Would you like us to send the list, or would you like to have, like, an interview with our HR team that we could do?
ECTV, just what you gave for dates and stuff, maybe we can...
Maybe they'll scroll them and...
Exactly. They can scroll it on television. Maybe it would help.
I'll forward you the email I received, or I'll forward it to Tom Philbin.
Yeah, and Tom, I'm sure, Tom's here.
And then Tom can give it to ECTV.
Yep. That would be great. Okay, now I'm going to jump all over the place here. On exit 93, that Sullivan Station, that exit, is there any work going to be there to get that? Because it's only about a five or six-car exit off of 93, with traffic back down there. Is there something they've got to get that to move a little quicker through Sullivan Station?
And so, what, I just, so I'm clear, we're talking about if you're traveling on 93 North, and you get off at exit 28, which is Sullivan Square. There's two things that are really important there. Number one, when you get down to the bottom of the ramp, the new configuration will allow for two right-hand turns and then one left, which is now, it's currently set up for one and one, correct, Al? And so that will actually make a significant difference. And then in the most recent job that they did on the highway, they actually did a setup lane, and they have striped it accordingly to allow for people to slide over to the right and then get queued up to get off 28. So I do think a combination of the two right-hand turns at the bottom, plus the new signal installation, and once they coordinate the timing of the signals, they'll all move in sequential order.
Now, this is by the shrouds cover.
Yes. So this is, the idea is to get you off 93, have you turn right, and then as you work your way around the circle, it's all-new signaling, and for the first time, it's actually connected from a timing perspective. So they should roll in sequence to help people get through and make the turn and get to where they're going.
On the complete circle, when you went around, I see there's work done on that parking area?
Yes.
Sullivan, I don't know who owns that.
That's MBTA, but we actually did a repaving, new sidewalks.
You couldn't have went up at all there?
Well, no, they didn't want us to build, because they're actually going to, at some point in the future, they're actually going to probably take out the rotary. The plan is that someday that will be more of a grid intersection. They are going to keep the tunnel below, but on the, on the, at the grade level, that ultimately will become more of a grid. So they didn't want us to build anything extra out there, because there will be a redo of that.
And, Bob, with that, next question, that tunnel, will they ever get that thing fully working?
Yeah, they, the problem underneath is that the drainage hasn't been working for years, so when they do the reconstruction, they'll do all the drainage work. But right now, they had to limit it down because they...
Was it one lane, or usually three, I believe, right?
So yes, that's part of the long-term project in Sullivan Square that the City of Boston is doing.
On Robin and Dexter Street, we have, are the manholes going to be exposed during the winter? Are they going to be covered?
Al, we have, currently have binder course now, and...
Yeah, so the covers will be upgrade all the way through the winter, so it won't get any plows. And then in the spring, we'll bring the covers back up, and then we'll put another two-inch in what we call the surface of the wearing course. We won't raise the covers until when we're ready to do that work. That's about a week prior, sometimes a few days prior.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Al.
Next question. Are we going to get any kind of overpass down there, either pedestrian or...
We've, yes, we've heard this question a number of times. We are not currently constructing any sort of overpass over the road because we haven't developed what would be on the other side yet, and how a potential bridge would be accepted. What I can tell you is, when we built the building, we put in extra footings out in our access road, and those footings would support a new bridge coming off of the building, and then at some point cutting across and over Broadway, and would literally go into a connecting or adjacent building next door. However, we want to keep all the, in the future, we would want to keep all the pedestrians at the elevated level, so they never go down to street level. The problem is, I can't construct that now, because we don't know where and how it would be accepted on the other side of the road. So here's what we've committed to do. Number one, we're going to, we're going to make sure that we cross them in the right place. Number two, at opening, we are going to actually do some staffing out at the street to help with the pedestrian flow. As expected, when one of these buildings open, you get a lot, the initial looksee and a lot of traffic will be there. Rather than just relying on traffic signals and pedestrian crossings, we've actually committed to putting staff there. So literally, if it looks like there are too many folks or whatever, we'll be able to have somebody either hold for traffic. We don't want, we want it to be as safe as possible. So we're going to staff that in the early months to figure out, until we can figure out traffic patterns. And then, of course, at a later date, once a development project is approved and would proceed, we would, only then would we then connect via any sort of physical bridge in a future phase.
Because just say, when people leave the casino now, they can go right and left, right?
Correct. When you come out to Broadway...
So it's going to stop traffic no matter what comes out of there. It's going to stop traffic.
Correct. You can go right or left. Yes.
And I have one more left.
Yes.
I don't know what the ethics concerning this board is as far as going to the casino, what they can do at the casino. Would somebody come up here and probably tell us what we can do?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that eventually we're going to have to know.
So, there's a couple of pieces to that. So pre-opening, we're actually in the process of, we have a legal review underway, and we have a process ongoing, and a meeting request with the Ethics Committee and State Ethics Board, so we can start understanding this. There's different rules from a municipal level to a state level to a federal level, and so we're in the process of understanding all of those rules. To your, and then there'll be different activities leading up to the opening that, of course, we would be honored to have you guys add. We just got to go through how that works and what that looks like, and make sure that we're all doing it the right way, which I know that you all want to as well. The other issue would be post-opening, and if you're looking to do a tour, and I think Mike Mangan was in the process of getting, trying to work with you guys on a tour date that worked, we would be happy to do another tour before we open for the council. I'd rather do it sooner than later, because we're quickly coming past the time where there's a lot of surprises that we'd like you to see at opening. And to see it this close to opening, you start to lose a little bit of the surprise and the luster. So we'd be happy to do that, and that would be acceptable under the laws we've done before. Post-opening, I think, I think we'd have to have another legal discussion. I don't know, and that's more would be on you. I think we'd have to just review whether you have the ability to play at a casino table or anything like that. And we'd be happy to review those rules and share them with you. At the end of the day, it's probably also something that you should take for consideration to your own general counsel, to make that determination for yourselves, but we'd be happy to participate with as much as possible. And the gaming commission, we'd be happy to make an introduction to the right folks at the gaming commission, because they want to make sure this is all done in the right way, too. So we're happy to do all of that.
Thank you, both of you. Good luck. The place looks great, and I'm sure I speak for everybody, and said we're excited to, see the doors open.
Great. Thank you very much. Good questions. Thank you.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for everything you've done for the City of Everett, and everything you're going to be doing for the City of Everett in the future.
Sure.
The main concern that we have, that concern that we had on lower Broadway while the construction is being done is, there are businesses down here that haven't been able to get their deliveries. So I find that to be a problem. And I understand construction, believe me, I was in construction for many years, and I was also in business for many years. So I understand that there's going to be disruptions, but to be at a point where a business person can't get their deliveries for work that they're doing, I find that to be a little of a problem.
Sure.
So what I would like to do is, I'm going to get, I don't want to give this person's name. I'm going to be talking to this person, and if it's okay to give him one of your numbers, to see what we can do to help this person out.
Why don't you give them John's number, and we'd be happy to just kind of see what the situation was.
Yeah, because what's happening is, you know, they're bringing parts, and because of people crossing all the time, they've, you know, they've been there for two, three hours, and they can't get down the street because of construction being done.
And if there's some way, and again, I don't know the specifics, but if we could help and reroute and try to make an accommodation, we're more than happy to look at that. Please give them John's info, and we'll talk with them directly.
Okay, so they can meet with you, John, and we could figure out a way for them to help them out.
Yeah, we want, we have to be able to let them do their business, so we would be more than happy to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And the other thing is, the dates that you gave, John, I know they're going to be on ECTV, but would you mind emailing them to me?
Sure.
Well, I'll send it to the entire...
Okay, very good.
We'll use the whole group. Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for everything. Again, thank you.
Councilor Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got to get extension codes on these things. Thank you always, like everyone else said. We appreciate what you're doing for Everett and what you're going to do for Everett. I've had some concerns, and believe it or not, today with four o'clock was the most latest one. I'm talking about the people that have industry in Everett, and they're the small owners of small businesses. And, you know, they understand that they can't be putting in winters on the 26th floor, those guys, you know. But now that the place is finished, we still know that you're going to have a lot of people that are working here, but things that don't, are not going to be finished in the building, we need someone in the local community to do the local work. And like, you know, I don't know, well, sheets, you're going to have, you're going to be doing, you know, 1,200 sets of sheets a day, and I think, anyway, but, you know, we don't have a business in Everett that can do 1,200 sheets a day, 1,200 sheets a day, but we may have one that can do 200 sets of sheets a day. And I don't know if that's true enough, because that's just a scenario. So somehow, I would like to have, even though you're going to do 800 sheets out somewhere else, I'd like to have a couple of 200 sheets in Everett, where the local people can get involved in it. Because, you know, they've been, they've been put out, they're losing their businesses, you know. The people that went to them are no longer going to them and everything, and because of the construction, and they can't maintain their business. They can't wait for this, for Everett to turn around again. So what they need to do is they need to get something from you guys. And I'm not talking just about sheets. So when we say local community, I know that you can't do something, they can't, we can't have someone that can do a thousand of things a day, you know, but they can do two hundred or a hundred, something like that. That's what I wanna look for, and I, I, I want you folks, if they're through it, to come up with some of those services that you'll need, so, and then we can let the local people know.
And to try to, to have as many locals get involved. And if you could, I'm gonna say the same thing that we said to, to the, to the rest of the council, which is, can you supply us with any names of businesses in particular that have contacted you?
Yes.
That would be great. Let's, let's gather them up, and then we'll, one by one, we would be happy to contact them and just kinda talk through their own ser... I can't, I don't know exactly each one's circumstance, but we're happy to call them all directly. If you could just, the ones that have contacted your office, please get them to John, and then...
I'm talking like about local competitors, you know, I, I know you're gonna have a whole bunch of people on, on, on your thing, but when you get an overflow...
But I, you know, in a case like that, if, I, I would hope they might even wanna join the team. I mean, we're gonna be hiring a full facilities crew.
Well, they might wanna do that. I don't know, I don't know what their situation is.
But again, help us, share with us who some of the folks are, and it's probably best if we customize that and talk to them one-on-one.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, just a couple of quick questions that came up during the, this presentation. You talk about your employees doing traffic control out on Broadway as opening happens, and I'm sure we can talk about this further, but that's gonna take some real careful thought, right? Because our police department with unions and so forth is going to have to...
Oh, they'll be, this would be in addition to the details that we'll be using in the front. We already have a great working relationship with Everett PD, so the only thing is, we'll be, we'll be looking at the outdoor areas with our transportation group, with cameras, with our own staff, and what we're gonna be looking for is finding areas where we may need a detail, and then we would do that appropriately through the city. So yeah, we're not gonna take the place of what we would do in terms of how we hire the local...
I assume that, but I just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah, no, good clarification. I didn't want you to think we were taking that role. Our, our, our role is to observe and find the problem spots, and then, and then take corrective action. But no, we're not gonna, and actually, I gotta tell you, all the way through the construction, the Everett Police Department has been amazing in trying to organize this. So that relationship will continue long after we open.
Bob, just, John, just a couple of last quick questions. Liquor license, I was, I was actually out at dinner on Friday night here in the city locally, and somebody was talking about extending their liquor license if the gaming, if the casino was going to get a twenty-four hour liquor license. Has that been discussed or talked about, about the hours of liquor serving operations?
Right, there's no change as of yet. However, there is an opportunity for us to apply for an extended license for only the gaming floor, and it would not be twenty-four hours. The, the law allows us to apply for an extended license for up to four AM, but that is only for people that are actively engaged in gaming on the casino floor. No restaurants, no bars.
They will apply by the one AM liquor, I think it's one AM liquor?
Actually, for the, the Gaming Commission issues, can issue a two AM license with an extension to four AM, and that extension to four is, again, only for the casino floor if you're actively playing, and we'll have to apply for that separately through the Gaming Commission. But nobody can go twenty-four hours for anything, and no restaurants or bars can go past what already are the approved hours.
And just two final questions. Manpower of police onsite, is it going to be state and local, or is the state going to be...
Yes, it, yes, it's gonna actually be a combination. Currently, the Police Department in Everett is working on a MOU or a memorandum of understanding with the state police, and it looks like we're gonna have a mixed contingent that will consist of both local Everett police and the state police.
On the gaming floor and throughout the facility?
On the gaming floor and throughout the facility, that's correct.
Okay, my last question, I'll finish it. The gaming school has been tremendous, as you guys spoke about tonight, and I actually know somebody that graduated today in the program. Will that continue as you open, or do you guys end the gaming school at some point, the dealer school at some point, and stop that?
We are planning to keep it open, because we believe there will be a lot of people that will wanna upgrade their skills, and they'll add second, third, or fourth games, and those games, the addition of those games would give them a better shot at a promotion. So, you know, the, the last casino that I worked at, we kept that dealer school open, I think, for almost five years, as people were continuing to upgrade their licenses. So our commitment right now with the college, it will stay open as long as it's active and busy.
So right now, you go through the gaming school, you're getting a certification for one game?
Right, one game, then you can go back right away for a second, and then a third or a fourth, and again, the folks that get more proficient in more games are the ones that are more likely to go ahead and get promoted up through the ranks. So there'll be a lot of upward mobility by folks continuing to go to the dealer school.
Wonderful, and I look forward to these monthly meetings as we get closer to talking about opening.
Thank you, thanks, counsel.
Counsel Simonelli.
For Counselman Simonelli, how many public parking spaces are there in the casino itself in Valet Parkin?
Three thousand in total, from Valet and Self Park. Thanks.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as, as a final note, I know that John and I have talked about various businesses in the area that have been impacted, and just in conformance with the spirit that we've had here this evening, as you're going to embark on additional work in the area, if, depending on the area it's going in, if you could put into the mix part of the plan, I know time is of the essence, but if somehow, some interaction with the local businesses down, and let them know what's happening, perhaps there's a way to still satisfy the needs in order to get everything done, but be able to do it in such a way that it impacts as minimally as possible on the business.
Sure.
Because as, as colleagues, like, we've, we've talked about the delivery, we've talked about restaurants, we've talked about a lot of businesses that are getting impact. So as we start to extend some of that other construction work, if, if maybe we could just meet with them, talk with them, and see what we can do to try to...
So we, we currently meet monthly with the Island End Group, which is open to any of the businesses anywhere, really, but it's focused on businesses in that area. It's coordinated by the Chamber of Commerce, and the meeting's held in the neighborhood. It's typically held at the Distrac Gas Visitor Center, I'm not sure what the new name of the company's called now, but it's at the visitor's center at the gas facility, meets monthly. You're welcome, anyone's welcome to join, if anyone watching the program tonight wants to join, you can contact the Everett Chamber of Commerce to be added to the list and be added to the invite. We plan to continue that.